Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, July 19th, meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. We will begin our meeting this evening, as usual, with a Thank you. And if you would, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Excellent. So this is the time in the meeting that's available for Planning Commissioner announcements. Are there any announcements this evening? Richard?
Yeah, this Fourth of July, hopefully everybody had a good time, yeah. And I just wanted to give a shout out to the -- I talked to some of the collection workers. It's a real busy -- could be a potentially busy time for the guys in the sanitary districts and the collection system. And just wanted to tell them that we appreciate keeping the product going where it's supposed to be going.
Okay. Anything else? No, seeing none. Then we will move on to public comment period. And this is a period for comment on anything, items that are not on the agenda. So if any of you have thoughts or ideas that you'd like to share with us, please come forward. We'd love to hear.
Good evening, Commissioner Ken Vestafell, resident of Morro Bay. On Tuesday, August the 2nd, at Cloisters Park, it'll be called National Night Out -- pardon my Canadian "out," some verbiage -- from 5:00 to 7:00. So barbecue will be put on by the police department. So come on down and just be friendly with everybody and have a great conversation. Secondly, I'd like to make the citizens aware of Morro Bay, that the city is looking into the sheriff's office to give them a proposal for coverage in the city. I was on the ad hoc committee several years ago, and at the end result, it was too cost prohibitive. That's why some of our offers leave and make $1,200, $1,300 a month more at the sheriff's office. The only way the city can make a contract is for a level of service, which we are probably at our minimum level of service with the staffing that we have now. I think you can go to City of Morro Bay's website and see a letter that was written by city manager yesterday, asking for those types of service. So August the 9th, at the city council meeting, this will be on the agenda. So I'm asking anybody who's interested in saving the police department -- correction, saving the level of service that we already have here, please come forward. There are some petitions that are going around. This is a very simple petition saying you would like to ask the city council to think about this. So again, August the 9th, 6:00 p.m., right here at the chambers. So we appreciate it. Thank you for having this meeting.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Erica Crawford with the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce. Just a public -- or thank you, rather, for the work that the commissioners did on the parking in lieu of discussion that you had a few meetings back, or maybe the last meeting. The chamber is very pleased with the way that city council had come out with the parking in lieu of fees as an economic stimulus, or something to spur some business revitalization and expansion opportunity for our local businesses. So thank you very much, and we're doing our very best to get the word out. So thank you, just publicly.
Anyone else? Okay. Then seeing none, we will bring it back to the commission for our consent calendar. Consent calendar tonight is the current and advanced planning processing list and approval from of the minutes of our May 17th meeting. Are there any comments, or corrections, or issues with either one of those items? Questions?
I just got just a quick question, or comment, or whatever. On the 1840 Main Street, where we had a pretty -- kind of the discussion that we also had in regards to some of the lists that we had put down there, and we were talking about traffic, and we also -- there is a -- I brought up sewer capacity as a issue. I'm not sure if that needs to be written in there or not. I just want -- what do you feel, Scott, on that?
Excuse me. You mean as a specific comment versus having the entirety of the video available on there? Were you concerned that that specific comment wasn't written out? We can make that happen.
Yeah, I would feel a little bit better. I brought up that it's a capacity issue, and it's a known capacity issue that I brought up. So I'd appreciate it if you can.
Okay. We can amend it to make specific reference. Not a problem.
So just evaluation of sewer capacity at that location?
Yeah.
As number 11?
Yeah.
Scott, just want some clarification on a couple of the mobile homes that have been installed, and where we are on the -- on our understanding with that, and how to progress with that. There's the one on Orton Street, and then there's also the one on Greenwood. And I drove by Greenwood today, and it's still, you know, they're still -- where are they with their garage or covered parking on that?
Yeah, their garage portion was deferred because they were still putting that together. So don't know. Have to go back and look and see what the, you know, what the final decision was on that. I don't recall. And Orton, that one's, I think, moving forward now. I believe that they're in the middle of install now. I know we went out and did an inspection either, I think today, this morning on it. And that one also has a detached garage associated with it. But that'll be something that's constructed separately onsite. It's not a modular or manufactured type unit.
Yeah, it looked like it was being formed in the back.
Yeah, that's one of the things we were looking at, was the setback certs on that, I think, today.
Yeah, I was happy to see that. But I just had a couple citizens come to me and ask me what we're doing, and is this now -- are these now allowed, and can they go on their next door? And so they're concerned about their property.
So they are allowed by code. We had this discussion in relation to the one on Greenwood before. They are allowed by code. Our code does not require them to have a continuously poured foundation. Or does the building code require that? In fact, they're requiring -- we actually certify that they put them in consistent with the manufacturer recommended installation requirements for the foundation. And then that gets recorded against the property, actually, that they were inspected and installed correctly. So it's one of the inspections that take place as part of that, and we require that recordation. Moving forward, I know we had talked previously, especially in relation to the Greenwood one, about, you know, potentially bringing something forward that required them to be installed on permanent foundations that were continuously poured, say, concrete foundation. And still in the process of looking at that. It's actually one of the things on my list of to-dos to look up in relationship to the new building code that we'll be implementing here in January. We just got the codebooks for the new cycle, and we'll be starting that review in August. And we were going to take a look through that and see if there was something that we could adopt separately outside of that process, to require something, you know, more substantial. And then internally, we found a discussion about really making sure that we're adhering to residential design guidelines when it comes to the installation of these types of units. So they look a little more like the, you know, residential houses that they're being placed next to. And so that's kind of where we're at with that. I mean, we don't have a whole lot of specific policy language that deals with them currently. And so sort of working on that.
Yeah, most of the concerns that I've been hearing are that they're not compatible with the neighborhood. They, you know, they look like mobile homes because they're not on continuous foundations. And also that they're, in the event of an earthquake, that they're going to be -- could become a hazard both from, you know, by tipping and falling, you know?
I mean, building code requirements, I mean, that's the standard of review. So that's the way they are right now. Although we potentially can adopt something outside of the building code, or separate from it, basically, you know, an amendment would go along with that process, would be a separate, through separate resolution. When we go through and adopt the codes, it could have something, some different requirement for them. And so that's what we're going to be looking at options for as we move forward with the code update.
Can we flag them for Planning Commission review, or if any more come in? Like, we've got two now, and they're kind of, you know, back to back almost.
It just depends on where they're at. Some areas, it would require Planning Commission review. Some areas, it's done. It's a staff level type thing. You're talking about policy change, and that happens at city council level, not at the Planning Commission level. Although, I do hear your concerns, and it is something, you know, we've been sort of working with and trying to, I mean, because we've only -- we've had two, you know, and they've actually both been -- and the projects have been around for a while now, making their way through the process. And so it's coming up with what we're going to apply to them, and how we're going to deal with them, and how we're going to deal with them fairly. Because they are allowed. They do, you know, they are a form of affordable housing often. That's the way the one that's on Orton is being, you know, installed. It was an affordable means to, you know, for a family to move here. And so there's some backstory behind those that go along with that. But you also want to be respectful of the neighborhood that you're placing them in. So I think just, you know, paying careful attention to design guidelines that have been adopted is probably a good step in the right direction, you know, toward that. So it's looking more like a house and less like a manufactured home.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Yeah. And just to clarify about, there are permits and decisions that are made in the process of moving forward with these projects that could be appealable to the Planning Commission if someone were concerned.
Absolutely. I mean, we, just like anything else, when something's approved at the staff level, we notice 500-foot radius for those projects, just like we do for things that go to the Planning Commission. So certainly, a lot of notice goes out about that. We had input from some folks in the neighborhood, and had some discussions with them about it. That happened.
Where it rises to the level of, you know, of concern mostly is not when they see the sign, but when they see the houses going in and setting on.
Well, I'm talking about, we mail notices out to 500 feet. I mean, that's a fairly large radius. And folks did know. I mean, we did get input inquiries. Some folks came and looked at the plans. Some folks called us. So there wasn't inquiries that came in as a result of the notices that we sent out. And, you know, I mean, as you're aware, we increased the radius, which we sent notices out a little over a year ago, from the 300 requirement to five.
So with that, are there any -- do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar with the amendment to the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar, A1, A2.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion second. Any discussion with that? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries 5-0. Okay. So then we will move on to public hearings. I think we have one that's going to be fairly brief. First item in this case is B1, case number E00-000-106, request for abandonment of a portion of sewer easement at 110 Orcas Street. And I think we have a request for a continuance on this. Do you want to speak to that, or?
We are requesting a -- we are requesting a continuance on this item, because not only this abandonment was going, you know, sort of hand in hand with an application that we had for improvements to the lot, some minor changes to the residence, and for installation of a culvert structure and the drainage feature that sits behind this lot. It raised some concern with the neighborhood, and as part of that, the applicant's going back and talking with the neighbors. We asked that he go do that. And we didn't want to bring this forward separately. We, you know, these are kind of on separate tracks, because abandonments are done through Rob's department, Public Works Department, and not through community development. But we thought it prudent, given the concern that was sort of generated about the project side of things, that these things move forward together. And so that's why the request for the continuance. So it doesn't appear as though it's coming forward sort of in a piecemeal fashion, even though the abandonment probably doesn't have much to do with what they're requesting to do from a development standpoint.
And is this something that the applicant is agreeable with?
They agreed with the continuance, yeah.
So are there any other questions for staff, or discussion on the issue?
Should we check and see if there's any?
Yeah, thank you. Good. Is there anyone, is there any member of the public that would like to comment? We'd be happy to open it up for public comment at this point. Seeing none, we'll bring it back.
Maybe you got one.
I happen to live on that block, and my wife wanted to say something, but she's on a wheelchair, so I'll speak for her. We are concerned that, you know--
Your name, sir?
Oh, my name is Daniel Pompa. I live at 147 Mendoro Street. I live behind the Dry Creek. And a lot of our neighbors are concerned that where the houses is fine, but on the bottom, it's zoned as a flood zone. Therefore, I have to have flood insurance. A lot of us do not have it. It's not required. But we're concerned that any changes to that creek will cause a backup possibly for the entire neighborhood. It's a dry creek, but we are very concerned about it. And I hear you're going to have a continuance on it, and I'm very happy. But I just wanted to let us, let you know that a lot of the neighborhood is concerned about it, and that we'd like you to review it before passing any construction to that sewer, the creek that we're mentioned with. We're very concerned the neighborhood is. So I'd appreciate if all of yous would just consider it before passing any construction to that creek, because it concerns the entire block. Thank you.
Sir, I didn't get your name. I'm sorry.
My name is Daniel Pompa. I live at 147 Mendoro. And I've been speaking to a lot of the neighbors about this. And we're all concerned about a flood possibility. Everything's been running great, but we're afraid any construction to it at this time possibly could cause a backup and create a flood for the entire neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah. Obviously, there's a lot of information we don't have in front of us right now, and hopefully, that will be addressed at the time. Any other public comment? Okay, now we'll bring it back to the commission. Yeah, we have, right now, we have basically one paragraph. So I don't think we can really get into the issues at all. Do we have a motion for continuance?
Can I ask one question just to staff?
Of course.
This creek, do you guys have fish and game, fish and wildlife involved in this when they start modifying it?
The creek is not identified as esch in our LCP, and with that's with the concurrence of the Coastal Commission. So if they're, if we end up getting, you know, inquiries back from them related to permitting, then we would talk with them. But at this point, it seems like we're not going to have to, fishing game, so.
Scott, there's no, the code basically says you can't increase hydrologic risk on a neighbor with alterations. You can't increase stormwater runoff on a neighbor, and you can't increase flood damage on a neighbor.
So the thing added before you guys tonight is not the development. So if we could refrain from talking about that, that'd be great.
Theoretically.
But yes, when you're dealing with these types of things, we will be addressing, they'll have to go through the FEMA process, and there'll be a determination as to what impacts it has on the flood zone there and the flood elevations. They have to go through that process, or will.
And, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, cool.
And I assume an evaluation in terms of sort of habitat, the effect on habitat and the issues?
Yeah, and there's not any, it's not environmentally sensitive habitat. Again--
Yeah, you're right.
-- this is on the scope of the item. I don't want to get into deliberations on the development application that you don't have in front of you.
Exactly.
Okay, I'll move that we continue item B1 to a date uncertain.
I'll second. Okay. So we have a motion, and we have a second. Do we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Stausky?
Aye.
Commissioner Luer?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingraffi?
Aye.
Chair Taft?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Let us continue.
Thank you very much. So now we will move on to a project where we do have a little more information, and that is item number B2, case number E00-000-107, which is request for abandonment of a portion of a sewer easement at 219 Marina Street. And I assume that, since Scott is the only one here, you're going to talk to us, or is this going to come from Rob?
You're fortunate. We have Mr. Lyvik, our Public Works Director, here to speak to this item this evening. Rob?
Thanks, Scott. Chairman Taft, commissioners, this item is a request for abandonment of about 80 square feet, or exactly 80 square feet, of sewer easement at 219 Marina Street. This is a first step in the process for a vacation or abandonment of a public service easement. This is, this process is to find general plan consistency, and then it goes on to city council for adoption of a resolution of intention to abandon, which sets up the official public notice procedures under the Streets and Highways Code to post the site at three locations. I don't know how we're going to get three signs in 80 square feet of sewer line abandonment, but we'll give it a shot. And schedules a date for a public hearing to abandon or vacate that public service easement. This abandonment is required, this was omitted from the staff report, in order to approve the construction of the development of the site. The garage actually sits on top of this section of easement. The sewer line does not occupy the section of the easement that is proposed to be abandoned. It stops about right at the property line, and a new cleanout will be installed at that location. There is an existing 10-foot wide sewer easement that provides us access to that cleanout. And the reason we're putting a cleanout there is the home, existing home did connect to the sewer at that point, but without a cleanout. This is located just north of Marina Street, the easement is, and it's between Morro and the Embarcadero. The sewer would flow up to Morro, and then through the collection system, and ultimately arriving at the treatment plant. So like I said, this is a first step in the process, finding general plan consistency that will allow for the full development of the property. And then we'll move on to city council. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Rob? Joe?
I'm not quite sure I understand fully. There will be a new cleanout?
There is no existing cleanout there at the end of the sewer, the public sewer main. So we're having the applicant install one there, and so it'll allow us to access that main. The way it was connected historically was their lateral just went to the end of that main line.
So there wouldn't be any additional expenses soon by the public, any expense for any construction of the property?
Correct.
That was my question.
Will you still have access to that cleanout?
Yes.
Okay. Is there going to be a driveway there that you'll be able to get your vacuum pumps or something to it?
There's not an existing paved access to it now. It's about 204 feet, I think, is the length of that line, so they'll drag hose back to it. This is kind of a legacy of the way Morro Bay developed. I probably wouldn't have put a sewer line back there if we were doing it today. But unfortunately, we're kind of stuck with the way we developed our, kind of our collections infrastructure back in the day. It might have been better to run that line down to Embarcadero, but I don't think when this developed, Embarcadero may not have existed.
Yeah. Now, are you going to, you know, I don't see any other easement on this side to get to that. If there's future development there, do you have agreements in place to access this from Marina Street, or are you going to come in for market?
We would come in for Morro.
Okay. Yeah, I guess, okay.
We'd come down our legal easement. Typically, the guys will knock on the doors of the residents and ask permission to access it, instead of coming down everybody's side yard to access it. But we do have legal access. And it's a fairly common occurrence around town. We have a few dozen of these situations.
Okay. It seemed like that'd be a place where they might want to put a fence. So has that been, do you just, do you have conditions on the development that would allow them? That if there's a fence, there's a gate or something like that?
Yeah, we'll have conditions on the abandonment that will require that.
Okay, great.
Rob, I'm referencing Exhibit B on the packet. When you're talking about access, I noticed that there's a sewer, the sewer easement, the 10-foot easement coming from, that would be--
Morro.
Morro. Okay. Now, you're going to be putting, can you, number one, how did you guys get a sewer main put in without a lamp pole? Because that's, you know--
Like I said, this is a legacy issue. I'm not sure how they built sewers in the days gone by, but--
Well, my experience is the old maps, they are good. This looks like what happened was a lateral got turned into a sewer main from, because there's some condos there, and then that vacation rental right there, because there's actually two sewer lines. The reason why I'm, I had to go down there, and I ended up talking to a couple of the boys that run the vac truck, and I kind of got an explanation what goes on there. And there's actually two sewer lines coming down Morro--
Right.
--and one of them connects. So when you're, I'm kind of looking at this Exhibit B, when you're trying to, when you say you want to get access to it, are you talking about making a accessible easement off Marina Street so they can get back? Because coming back, accessibility from Morro all the way down there is not--
Very difficult.
Well, kind of impossible in an emergency.
I agree. But like I said, it's a legacy that we have. The, it occurs quite frequently around town where we have these backyard easements.
Okay, but is there a way to get a easement, an excess easement, along the parcel number one to get to that cleanout in the event of an emergency? Because that's what they would, they would have to do. Because that's what they would, they would have to do.
We don't have that conditioned. When this was run past our collections crew, that, that's something that they did not request. But when we go through the abandonment, we can forward your recommendation on to city council for condition for a access easement along that side yard. Good idea.
So, any other questions? I have a couple. Rob, how, do you know how deep this, the, the main line is at that point?
No, I don't.
I'm just, I'm looking at the plans that we approved back in last year. And it looks like the garage wall is going to be really, really close to that cleanout.
I know the applicant's architect is in the room. Perhaps he has more information on the specifics?
Okay, I, I guess the question I had is, you know, given, it looks, I mean, it's not, it's, it looks like there's a foot or two left. The question I had is sort of, if you need to, if you need to repair that line, are you going to be able to dig it up, basically? Without damaging the house?
Yeah, the end of the line will be right at the property line. And I know there will be at least five feet from the property line to the garage because of the side yard setbacks that are required.
So is, that gives you enough room to, to get to the line if you need to?
Yes, and probably we wouldn't dig it up. We would line it. But the, the point that Commissioner Sadowski brought up about the physical access to the end of that line coming from Marina Street, I think is an important point to have that required.
So, and would five feet be an adequate width for that access?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. That's all the questions I have. So this is, so first we'll ask if anyone has any ex parte communications to reveal on this?
I'm not sure if it's ex parte. I've talked to staff and then I tried to talk, I knocked on the door over at 219, but I didn't have any answer there.
Okay, so it was an unsuccessful ex parte. So then we will, at this point, we'll open it up for public comment. If the, if the applicant's representative or architect would like to speak, we'd be happy to hear, or any members of the public.
Hi, Chris Parker. On the depth of that, I'm trying to remember offhand from when we did the video, I, I think around two to three feet deep is all right there. Do you have any idea?
It can't be really deep because you're fight, I believe you're fighting grade there to get back up to Moro.
And just another item is, the date on the map was 1928 that we found this.
Wow.
Because it wasn't actually in the title report. That's why we're coming back too on it. Pamela Newman, we were ready to almost pull the permit and that's when she finally found another map from 1928 that listed it. And all it really does is list it from Moro Street, says 200 feet to the west. So it doesn't really document it too well. So that was just some of the clarity on it.
Huh.
Thanks.
My name is Vicki Rial and I live on Marina Street. And to give you some history, that was an alley back there. That's why the sewer was put in there, which was a reasonable place to put it at the time. Our question is, we have no problem with having the abandonment, you know, given to the costas, but we would like to know on what side of the wall of the condos is the sewer line?
It shows it being on the south side of the property line?
Well, as I understand, I was gone at the time the condos were built, that that alley was divided between the two lots, between the condos and the property owners. So the property owners gained some footage when the alley was abandoned. That's my understanding. So, the condos built a nice wall along there. And we don't, and they've excavated down considerably. Just out of curiosity, our backyard is eight feet deep. Do we have our sewer line running through our backyard? Or is it over on the condo side?
The exhibit that I have shows it being on the south side of the property line that divides the properties that front onto Marina Street from the condos, which would be on the exhibit track 951.
So then it would be in our yards?
It'd be in your yard and within the sewer line easement.
That's not comfortable.
And it's probably on your title report, too.
Thank you.
Okay.
Excuse me, I, I didn't get your name, I'm sorry.
Vicki Rial, R-I-A-L.
R-I-A-L, R-Y-A-L. And then you live on Marina Street, you say? Okay, thank you.
Any, anyone else who would like to speak on this issue? Please, come forward.
Betty Winholz, a request that this kind of a topic could use a diagram for the public when you're talking about sides and lots and where it's located, maybe if not now, then on the next kind of project like this, if we could have a picture so we know what you're talking about. And then, secondly, I noticed in the report that it said the abandonment has to be for the benefit of the city, not for the developer. So I'm wondering what findings you're, you're going to make for that.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Can we put one of the copies that one of you has up on the overhead so that the people?
Yeah, sure. Okay, so if there is no further public comment, we will close that and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Who'd like to start off on this?
I'll start. I, I, I got a question for staff. On this development, they, you can go two stories, yeah? And for this development, or can you go three? Can it be down below with the basement in this area?
Well, you could have a basement, I suppose.
So it could go like some of the...
But you can't have a basement, you can't have a basement in an area where there's a sewer or an easement.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, like, some of the hotels that they have the parking, you know, so, potentially. And the other, the other question, I, I got a question for Commissioner Luer. You know, what, what do, what does it cost per square foot to build in the, like a coastal zone? Like, about, you know, give or take 50 bucks a square foot.
Okay, yeah, that's a, well, depends. Is probably the closest answer I can give you, but, you know, you're...
I mean, are we talking 300?
Yeah, you're, you're, you're talking 250 to, you know, on up. Depends on the, depends on the foundation, depends on the...
Okay.
You know, just, there's, that's pretty wide range.
Okay, because, to me, it, it seems, I'm very cautious when I see abandonments. And I, I'd like to give you an example that I was personally have experienced. There was a sewer easement in Cayucus, right next to a lift station. And what it went, it went down to the beach and there was that old SSO, which was a sanitary sewer overflow. If that lift station overflowed, it would flow down. And what happened was, the county, which is part of LAFCO, they abandoned that and the piece of property, next thing you know, the guy's got a nice walkway with the barbecue and a fireplace right in, in that whole abandoned area. And that, that house sold for, was, I think it was the most expensive house in Cayucus at the time, was $4.2 million that it sold for. And so when we start looking at abandoning sewers, I, I get easements is a very sensitive topic, especially when it comes to this kind of area or discussion. I, I look at like, okay, you have 80 square feet, right? It's what you're looking at to abandon. You could go up, what, three floors? So you got three, so that's like a potential of 240 square feet that you could look at it that way. What is the value of that development? Just the value of it? I mean, the city should not just be giving property away, I don't think, especially in these economic times. And then just to help facilitate a development. Now, I, I think that there's a way that you can make this work, but I don't think it's prudent and fiscally responsible to just, you know, abandon things like that. That's just my opinion.
Well, but the city doesn't own the property. They simply have an easement.
Yeah.
So they're not really giving away property.
Yeah, I understand, but they giving away a use of, like, if you look at easement law, they have access and it's a public, public, it's for the greater good of the public to be able to use that. So when we abandon it, we'd no longer have that access and that use. So there is some value to it.
No.
Absolutely.
The commission makes an interesting point because clearly, I mean, I hadn't thought about this earlier, but easements are clearly a property, right? They are, they are, they are property. I suppose there's a longstanding public policy that these things, if they're no longer used by the city, are abandoned, but it does raise an interesting question.
Section 8300 and follows on in the California Streets and Highways Code talks about easements and what they're, how they're abandoned. So they're available for the public's use as long as the public needs that use. Doesn't speak of, we have no rights to the underlying fee title of the property. If the public doesn't need the easement, then it should be abandoned because that allows for, looking for a finding, full development of the property, which would be consistent with the city's general plan. And that benefits the public, the full development in accordance with our general plan. I've done quite a few abandonments in, in my career and it's interesting. This is the only city that has wanted to sell the rights to abandonments or thought there was some value that they needed to sell it to the property owner. Like I said, easements are for the, public service easements and right-of-way are for the public's use as long as the public needs that. If they cease to need that, and for example, where there's no sewer line there, I would venture that the public doesn't need access where there is no sewer line. Therefore, there's no value of that easement to the public.
I question that.
You question the California Streets and Highways Code?
No, the California Streets, I read that highway code about abandonments. I'm not questioning the code. What I'm questioning is if you don't have, there is, sewer easements were established so you can go in and service in an emergency. And a lot of times the sewer easements extend past the lamp pole or past the end of the line. And that is so you can go in with your equipment and, and, and do what you have to do. I, I've seen LAFCO kind of abuse this kind of methodology of abandonment and, and, and you could look at it like saying, well, you know, you helped the developers, you're kind of helping the public. Well, you know, the, the public as a whole, like, if you look at it from a public trust doctrine, for instance, it's a benefit as the public as a whole. You hope you don't have to access that and have a problem, but if you do, you should have, the first responders have means to get around and put their equipment in and, and deal with it. So as far as like, if there's not a sewer line, like, in the actual end of the easement, I, I don't really agree with that.
What I do see as a public benefit is if we could condition this to, to allow an access easement along the setback, along the property line, to get to that, to get to that cleanout in case of an emergency or for, for regular servicing. I think then you do have a nexus with the public benefit because for one thing, it's going to make it, it's going to save, save maintenance cost and it's going to be cheaper for all of us.
Yeah, it, it brings up a good point, like a mitigated measure.
Well, then, that's why I was asking about the depth of the line. I mean, we're in the process of replacing our lateral and I can tell you the hole that they had to dig was, was enormous. I mean, you could bury Volkswagen in that hole. And so that's why I was asking whether that five feet would be, you know, adequate to access the, the line if you needed to.
Being that it's a couple feet, couple, three feet deep, I would say, yes, it is.
Yeah, if that's the case, then...
Because I, I know you are fighting grade to get back up tomorrow.
Is that something that we would have records on or are we just, those are lost in the mist by now, since 1928?
I would guess if we had one of our collections guys here, we'd know exactly how deep that is. I just don't have that information in my hand. And I would, I can believe that two to three feet would be order of magnitude of how deep this is based on the rest of the physical features out there.
So could we add a condition along the lines of what Rob is saying to the, to the approval? Is that something that we have the authority to do?
Yes, I think we could add that to the, to the resolution and we would pass that, bring that forward to city council for their resolution of intention and abandonment resolution if they choose to proceed forward. What I understand it to be is a five-foot access easement along the easterly property line for parcel one of that parcel map, 7PM 63. From Marina Street to the 10-foot wide sewer easement.
And that, one, one more question. That's simply a right of access, correct, Rob? In other words, it doesn't prevent them from planting bushes there or landscaping, whatever they, you know?
Correct. Sorry. Typically, our, our easements are non-exclusive, I think with the exception of right-of-way. So you could do limited improvements in there. You, of course, if there's any fences, we're going to take them down rather quickly and like the suggestion was, if there is a fence there, to put a gate in that fence so that we have access to that line.
I, I, I think that if you, if we're going to have an easement there, you got to have to have a condition that you can get back there. You know, not, you know, not hopscotching, you know, hopscotching off bushes to try to get to your problem. Because I mean, coming in from the... Because I mean, coming in from the horizontal, you don't forget about it. Like, parallel to Marina, coming down that 10-foot, because that goes way back. And you're going, you're, you're, you're going over property lines and, and stuff. So if you, you know, it's 120 feet or something, that's what I was told, I think, from that manhole in the street out.
About, about 200 feet.
200 feet, okay. So you, you know, you got a lot of hoes out there if you have a problem. So I mean, you know, I, 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 I think if you're going to put an easement in, make it so that, that the boys can go back there, you know?
So flat work, ground cover?
Yeah.
Yeah, there appears to be an existing fence right on the property line or very close to the property line. I just, I don't know if we know if whether that's, would, would be within that easement or not.
On the.
I'm, I'm looking at, I'm just looking at the, we, we've got some material here from when we reviewed the addition initially.
Fence along the east side of the parcel?
Right.
You know, appears to be pretty close to the property line.
Yeah. I mean, I would be, I would be comfortable wording, wording the condition to the effect of, um, no, no new improvements, um, other than, or, or improvements to be limited as specified by the public services director and let Rob, uh, work it out. Decide what they need.
I, I would like some more specifics than that. Like, um.
How about limited to flat work or ground cover?
Okay, that'll work.
Does that work for you?
That works for me.
Okay.
Yeah, well, if we're ready, I'll try to make a motion here. Uh, I move that we approve agenda item number B2.
Can I just interrupt for one second in terms of the motion? I would like to see a condition also that, a condition that says that, uh, this is dependent on the sewer ending up being five feet deep or less, because I think if it turns out that it's really 10 feet deep there, we'd have to take another look at it.
Okay. I move that we make a motion that approving agenda item number B2 and we don't have any other CPO numbers or, um, so do you need any other numbers on this, Scott, for the, for the motion?
E107 would be fine.
Okay, E107 with the, um, approved, uh, conditions.
And that also includes the one we were talking about earlier, if there's a fence there, that we need a gate to that fence?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah. So the conditions would be, it's city, you know, city employee access or however that needed to be worded. Um, improvements to be flat work or ground cover or, or on a determination of the community director. And then on the condition that the, the sewer line is six feet or less in depth. Does that, did I get it, guys?
Yeah, I think we're just limited to, instead of like, because we don't know what, you know, employees come and go, so I would say just keep it to flat work and ground cover and, or not any wiggle room as far as like, you know.
It'll be an access easement.
Yeah.
There is a legal term to that.
Right.
I'll, I'll second.
So just to be, just to be technically correct, we are, we are finding that the proposal is consistent with the general plan with the conditions specified. Okay. Uh, we have a motion, we have a second. Uh, do we have any discussion on the motion? Then could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Sadowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Lower?
Yes.
Um, I'm not sure.
Graffia.
Commissioner in Graffia.
All right.
Chairman Taft?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Motion passes 5-0. Huh. So moving on to, uh, new business, um, item number C1 is parking management striping plan implementation. Little bit of a tongue twister. Um, and we, we do have some materials here and I believe Scott is going to give us a little talk on this.
Yep. As soon as they get the presentation up, should be good.
Hey, you can't go wrong with the photo of the rock.
All right, so, so this evening we have a review of the city's parking, 2007 parking management plan and some of the implementation pieces that are in it and hopefully some discussion on the part of the planning commission toward implementation of some of the items that are in that plan. Uh, the parking management plan was, as I said, adopted in 2007 by the city council. We haven't implemented much of it. We've done some work on directional signage in the city. Uh, we're going to continue to do more work on directional signage as part of the downtown waterfront strategic planning process that's sort of added on to the, been recently added on to the general plan and LCP update. Um, we've, oh, and we implemented some of the recommendations for the trolley routes that were in the parking management plan. Um, so that's about the extent of the implementation that we've done on the plan. Um, we've done some other parking improvements that are not part of the plan. Uh, we've added over the last year and a half about 200 parking spaces, uh, through use of the triangle lots and the lot that sits at the corner of Market and Pacific. That's the lot that we acquired when the city, uh, reacquired the Distazio's property. So it's that parking lot that's sort of across the street from it and which has been relatively recently striped. Uh, we've restriped some of the parking, the parallel parking, curbside parking in the downtown, adding the parking Ts there to delineate that parking, uh, so you can see where the parking spaces are. And then we've added the perpendicular parking on Market Street north of Beach, so that's in the area that sits over there adjacent to, um, the Sun Bulletin Building, uh, which is where LML Herbs currently resides. Um, so things that are in the parking management plan, there's just a few of the items that we've not implemented. Uh, that was to develop a parking page that's on the city's website. We don't really have much on our website related to parking. Uh, to create a shared parking program, uh, we don't have that, although we do have policies on our zoning code that speak to that, um, but those are longstanding policies. Uh, create an employee parking program, we've not done that. Uh, address delivery truck parking on the Embarcadero, um, we've not done that up until this point, although we are working on that currently. Um, implement angled parking in various areas of downtown. Uh, altered some of the existing timed parking limitations that we have throughout the city, maybe enforce some of them since we don't really do that right now. Um, and then add paid parking potentially, uh, and, uh, look at entering into public-private partnerships for some of the undeveloped properties that we have, say, in the downtown to create parking lots that could be used, uh, in at least the short term while they're not being utilized for much of anything else. Uh, so we haven't done any of those. So that's things that we could be doing, but, but aren't. Um, the council on January 26th took a look at the parking management plan. In fact, they directed staff to bring back some options for implementation. Uh, really what we were looking at at that time was kind of some of the striping options that are in the plan. Um, council, you know, took a look at it, had some concerns with various aspects of the parking management plan and, and sort of directed some additional study. Uh, this is the first opportunity I've really had to bring it back to the planning commission. We've been busy. Uh, so, and so the specific direction that was provided by the council during that review was to consider implementing angled parking, uh, to consider implementation of, uh, commercial loading zones on the Embarcadero. And again, that's part of the ongoing effort for the Centennial Plaza and Embarcadero widening, sidewalk widening project that's underway right now. Um, and so we will be getting some information back from the consultant on that to take a look at options for, for improving the delivery truck parking. Uh, research timed parking and then paid parking options, um, and then include review by all appropriate boards and commissions. Uh, so first item to look at was the angled parking. This is one of the slides that we sent to the city council back in, in January. Um, so this was to add angled parking on Morley Boulevard between Main Street and Monterey. So angled parking one side of the street, so at the top of the, the street there, you see the angled parking. Um, two of the other locations were on Main Street and Monterey, uh, between Harbor and Morley Boulevard. You can see the angled parking on the, on the left-hand side of each one of those streets. Uh, a fourth one, one of the kind of more interesting ones is angled parking in the center lane of Market Avenue, uh, between Dunes and Harbor. So, um, some of the issues that, that were generated, and one of the reasons the council didn't just tell us to go stripe the street was folks raised issues related to what happens to bikes? If we put angled parking in, then bikes have to go somewhere and is it a problem if they're on the inside or the outside of the parking lanes? And so that's what you see there is bike lanes, is there issues with having them on the inside, the outside? Do we use charos to indicate that, that you are going to have bikes in the street? Um, and I have some examples of what that looks like. So, um, what you see here is, uh, a bike path that's sort of on the inside of the parking and then the street is to the left, the parking and the street is to the left. This option would work in maybe one or two of the locations, probably not all of them because we don't have adequate width in the street to do this. Within the existing current improved right-of-way, we probably have enough right-of-way out there in some instances, but not enough improved right-of-way. We're not going to be widening streets anytime soon, that's expensive. Um, here's a, here's an example, you see the bike lane and it's on the outside of the parking lane. Also, you see the parking lane and they're backed in, so that works because cars can see bicycles, you know, occupying that space. Um, here's kind of the opposite, you have head-in parking and then those green painted bike paths to delineate that a little bit better and that's another option to deal with those, those types of situations. And then here's the use of charos. You see angled parking, this is again back-in angled parking with charos, so you're sharing the street with cars and you have the area, you know, adjacent to the parking area that's there. Um, here's, oops, another one with charos. It's hard to see because the picture's kind of dark, but those are head-in, so you'd be backing out at an angle into the, into the travel lane. But again, charos are just to let you know that you're sharing the, the, the regular drive lanes with, with folks on bikes. So those are some of the, the options that you can implement for, for areas where we might want to restripe and put in angled parking to, to achieve a greater yield. Um, the next steps for this would be to get input from the planning commission on this this evening, to get your sort of input, see what you think about it. Potentially identifying preferred alignments and then to develop some design options that would show what that looks like, uh, to, to verify our street widths, to make sure we can, uh, fit the, the desired, um, solutions into the existing right-of-ways. And then to return back to the, uh, planning commission with an implementation solution that you would later recommend to city council. We'd probably be also bringing it back to some of the other boards, PWA, this comes off the top of my head and maybe, maybe in some instances even, even wrecking parks. Uh, moving on to the next item, it relates to the commercial loading zones. Um, also, one of the suggestions in the parking management plan was to, to change the delivery times. We've had some, you know, inquiries to some of the business owners, it doesn't seem like that's really possible. Um, but the information that I get is this is something that was sort of run down a few years ago and so it's a little unclear to me exactly, you know, what delivery companies, um, wouldn't be able to do this or why they wouldn't, so probably want to run this down again and get verification that they can't do that. Um, and then to, and then it gave some examples of areas where to add those loading zones. And again, this is being considered in the, in the, um, Embarcadero widening portion of the Centennial Stair, our Centennial Stair and Embarcadero project. In fact, we should be getting, um, revised, two, uh, two option drawings from RRM coming up here pretty quick that have all of the improvements that are associated with the, the workshop that we had and which include, um, options, both of which will include options for, for loading and unloading for trucks. Um, so that's what the next steps section there says, is to take a look at, see what that looks like. Once we get that, I'll be running that back to the planning commission for your review to get your input on it. Probably going to have a, um, I think we're going to have another workshop on it to, to sort of vet the two options that we come out of the workshops with. So, um, those designs we should be getting back from RRM within the next two to three Paid parking, the parking management, uh, plan discusses paid parking options. Um, the plan, for the most part, dismisses this idea, uh, because it found that we didn't have a parking issue in, in the downtown and said, so why are you implementing paid parking if you don't really have a parking demand issue, meaning there was plenty of parking? Now, that's the finding of that report based on the time it was adopted and so back in 2007, so probably information, based on information from 2005 and 2006. Parking management plan does though, as it relates to paid parking, you know, acknowledge that it, it can do a couple of things. It can, uh, move cars in and out of spaces in your more heavily used areas, so you get greater turnover, more customers. And it can have an effect on employees, one of the issues that we seem to have, not only down the Embarcadero, but, uh, in the downtown, you have employees that are parking directly adjacent to buildings. Now, oftentimes that's one street over from where they work, but nonetheless, you have cars parked in those areas for the entire shift someone's working there. And if we had paid parking, um, and then we had less expensive parking kind of on the fringes, on the outside of the downtown, outside of the Embarcadero, um, you could sort of push those employee cars and parking into those areas. Um, and so that would be one of the, you know, the things to take a look at, um, in developing a, a paid parking solution. Certainly, this is one that, uh, before we would want to go much further if there was some interest on the, on the, on the part of the, the planning commission here to, to better look at this. Um, if there was, then we could come back and come up with a couple of ideas where this might work. And then we would need to go talk to the business community, um, because while I've had conversations with them in the past and, and, and many of the folks that I spoke with were in favor of it because they thought it would do just what we said, it would keep, would keep turnover happening in the areas where we're most heavy, where we're most heavily used for, for commercial traffic, both on the Embarcadero and, and in the downtown, there's some folks that aren't going to like it. So we need to sort of let them know and not surprise folks. And so the nice thing is we have Erica in the audience here that could help us with some of that, um, if you decide to go down that road. So we had the recent parking policy changes, uh, even Erica alluded to that earlier. Um, and so planning commission looked at this and made recommendations onto the city council. And the city council, back on June 28th, uh, adopted resolution 5416, um, acknowledging historic parking credits on the Embarcadero, um, substantially lowering at least for the next 23 months or so, uh, the parking and loof fees to free for the first four and then $500 for each space thereafter. And then, uh, providing discretionary authority for how many can be approved by staff, seven, planning commission up to 16, and city council over 16. So again, what we're looking to, to get from you here this evening is, is really some, some concurrence on, on looking at what the preferred, uh, areas to implement striped and angled parking would be. Um, if you like the, the locations that are, that are identified in the parking management plan, we can go look at those. And then if there's a preferred bike solution that you have or that you'd just like us to go figure out which ones fit and then come back, that's fine too. Um, and then. And then as the plan comes forward for the Centennial Plaza, Embarcadero sidewalk widening, we'll bring that forward to you. And that'll have options for the truck delivery solutions that I mentioned earlier. So that's kind of a future item that'll be coming forward to you. And then specifically to provide direction to staff related to the development of paid parking. I think that about ends my presentation. And so really, the rest of the time, I'd like to hear from you about what you think about these individual, you know, ideas and concepts, where you think we might want to go with them, starting preferably with the angled parking solutions that we had in the beginning.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Are there any questions for staff at this point?
Scott, do we send things like this to the bike coalition? I think it's the county bike coalition. I don't think it's the city of slow bike coalition. Because they're the sort of, well, I know they're a big advocacy group.
I think those would all be folks that we would engage once we, so the issue came up, and in fact, was Red Davis was one of the folks that brought it up and said, hey, well, what are you going to do with bikes? You know, if you put in this angled parking, creates a conflict potentially. And so the council thought, that's a valid point. You should go look at that. Others thought that as well. And there's other comments that happened at the meeting as well for that. But he was one of the folks that came forward and spoke to that. And, you know, it's a fair concern, so one that we should look at. And it's why, kind of showed what other cities, that's why those pictures of what other cities do, those are the kind of options that you see out there most frequently. Morro Bay Boulevard, you don't have a lot of cars driving quickly down there because we have a lot of stop signs. So you probably could have some kind of share the road, charo type situation, and it probably would work okay. It would probably also be viable for back-in parking, angled back-in parking. So you could really see bikes when they're coming down the road if you wanted to do that. I think you're probably going to get less folks on bikes traveling down those areas just because of all the stop signs. It's not a comfortable way to drive. Most people avoid Morro Bay Boulevard because of all the stop signs.
You know, especially if we could create a couplet between Pacific and, what was the other street there?
Harbor.
Yeah, Harbor. So that the majority of the traffic, bike traffic, if you have well-marked bike paths there, the majority of the bike traffic will go through there. And then that allow on Morro Bay Boulevard would be, a charo would work much better then.
Yeah, I noticed when you, I mean, I go over there and I sit and watch traffic sometimes. Don't ask. And I mean, just because I want, I mean, you wanted to see how this is going to function. Like, would it really work? Or is there way too much traffic over there to make the charo idea, you know, sort of, you know, possible? And it seems that, it seems that it probably would work. Cars tend to not drive super fast down that area, and they tend to avoid it a little bit. They go off on the other streets where they don't have to hit all the stop signs. So it seems like that is one area where just the charo concept might work. Or if you wanted to have a specific bike lane, we could look at it, what it looks like on both sides of the parking aisle. I mean, it just depends on how wide it is, whether we can implement it. We don't want to implement a solution that allows us to have it on one side, but then you can't even have parallel on the other, because then I think we end up with a wash. We don't get any, we don't get any bang for our buck on that, so.
So Scott, sorry, if I can ask you another question is, would it be allowable to have back-in parking where you're on a downslope? Because we're, you know, that's what Morro Bay Boulevard is. If we do it on the westward-facing side, you'd be backing in uphill into the angled parking lot, parking space.
I mean, it's, yeah, it's not, I mean, depending on where you put it, it's not that steep. So, yeah, you can do that. It would work okay. I mean, it's not going to be a problem. I've seen it, I've seen it in all different kinds of scenarios out there, that, you know, angled back, angled forward. It seems to work in just about anywhere you put it. It's just, you got to get people to get used to it, because a lot of people are uncomfortable and don't like it right away, you know, on first blush. But then once, say anything else, once you get used to it, people use it just fine. It'll fill up, you know, as many spaces as you can put out there. So, and it's something that you could implement not just in this block, but you could implement in other areas on Morro Bay Boulevard as well. It's just, we want to try it in one of these areas to see how it, you know, see how it functions, so.
Scott, all this talk is kind of like, that's why we need a general plan, right? I mean, isn't that part of the whole, when you look at different areas and general plan circulation element, blah, 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 you know, all this stuff? And so here we are, kind of piecing things together.
This is, this is, this is something, this is an effort in, a plan that the city paid for and put on a shelf. It has valid things in it that we don't, I mean, so if we go and ask somebody to do this, they would come back and say, hey, here you go, this is the stuff you could go do. So it's, it really is, these are solutions, they're real. I mean, that plan included real solutions that you can implement now. These were, these are things, if we hired someone else, they would come back and show, these are the type of angled parking solutions that you can put, and here are some options where you could put them. It would look just like this. So it makes sense to leverage, I mean, the city's not great at this. We do lots of plans and then put them on shelves. And to be able to use bits and pieces out of this if it works makes sense. Maybe it doesn't make sense, though. Maybe you think, ah, this plan's terrible, and this wouldn't work here. I mean, that's fine, too. I mean, it's just, the council asked us to go talk about this, and first folks I'm bringing it to is the planning commission, because these are things that the planning commission would normally look at, so. Yeah?
Scott, I should probably know this, I should have probably gone and looked. Is there a time limit on parking downtown currently?
We have, so all the areas that are green-curved have time limits that we don't enforce.
Right.
Currently. I mean, I think most people know we don't enforce them. And, you know, I mean, yeah, so there's limitations on those, all the areas that are green-curved. And I think at some point, you know, a while ago, we had a lot more areas with green curb, and we got rid of them. We painted over them because, for some reason, I'm not sure exactly why. That was one of the stories I heard from our public works department. But yeah, those areas that are green-curved are timed parking, and they usually have, maybe it's the signage that we removed that told you what the limitation was. Might have been mistaken on that. Removed some of the signs.
So the, so the, the 2007 parking management plan concluded that there was no shortage of parking downtown. So are we saying now that that has changed, that the situation downtown has changed, or...
So you could agree with that in 2016 and say, there is no problem. I think, I've noticed available parking spaces just about under any scenario that you can imagine in the downtown. Middle of the afternoon on July 4th, seeing them right in the middle of our business area, Main Street, spaces to park. But our business owners constantly, when I ask them about this, say that they're, you know, they feel that there is an issue. So this is actually a fairly inexpensive way to add additional parking in and around those areas that are most congested. And it, and if we add other pieces to these, maybe paid parking, maybe enforced timed parking, you know, we don't have to necessarily just have the police department do that. We have code enforcement officers now, and this could be something that we enforce on. Depends on how many areas we would start enforcing, you know, start to do the enforcement on, but that's another option. Maybe we enforce the laws we have on the books and the locations we have them, and maybe that helps out. Because I think the idea is, in the areas where we're most busy, you know, in the downtown and on the Embarcadero, is that I would imagine that most of the business owner would prefer a little more turnover, because that's more folks that are coming in and potentially visiting their stores. So that's usually why you put in paid parking, is you have it more expensive in the condensed area, and you make it cheaper out there. So people that are going to be there for longer periods of time park out here, it's cheaper, free. And that's where your employees will park, and then you have more spaces just in general, you know, available. And that's not happening right now. I mean, you can, we can all, we can all drive right over to the triangle lot down there. And we have a bunch of restaurants down in the Embarcadero that are open, and there's probably not any cars in the triangle lot right now. So there's, that means that there are, there are no employees that are parked there. And so those boys are parked in front of the places where the businesses are. So if we can change some of that behavior, then we can open up more parking spaces when it's busier down there. And that's probably a positive on the business side of things.
So this is a discussion item. However, if there's no objection, I see some members of the public here. I would like to open it up for public comment. So anyone who'd like to speak, please?
Evening. My name is Roger Ewing, Morro Bay resident. I recognize, I think everybody does, that parking is a major problem in Morro Bay. And we do need parking. But I think we should have parking backed by common sense. And as Mr. Graham just mentioned a moment ago, this may not make any sense at all, this angled parking on Morro Bay Boulevard. And I think he's absolutely correct. It doesn't make sense. Not one of those visual images that he presented to us is representative of Morro Bay Boulevard. There's not enough width to do any, in my opinion, any of those designs. You put in angled parking, you are shortening the westbound lane, its width. We have UPS and FedEx parking next to the cars today as they are, leaving only one lane for traffic both ways. It works. We get through it. We get by it. We're tolerant of it. But angled parking is going to eliminate the westbound lane. That's number one, in my opinion. The second one, we are not other cities. Morro Bay has a unique lifestyle all its own. We have a 25% population, 65 and older. You challenge them to angled park on Morro Bay Boulevard. It may be easy getting in, but getting out is going to be a disaster waiting to happen. I understand staff's intent to try and come up with solutions. But first, I would urge staff to try and understand the environment they're working in, what Morro Bay Boulevard really is. Give us a plan. Give us a visual image of its actual width, the actual width of the angled parking, the actual width of the parking on the south, leaving us a very true impression of what's left. These visual images do not. The information you're presented does not. I would recommend and urge you, please, to do not, let me put it more simply, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. It's been this way for decades. We've gotten along fine with it. There are times, two or three times out of the year, four times in which parking does become a real problem. But beyond those times, the citizens, the residents, adjust. We adapt. We make it work. We do a little extra walking. So recognize that you're looking at a parking plan for Morro Bay, not Pismo Beach, not elsewhere. Morro Bay. Thank you very much for listening. Have a good meeting.
Betty Winholz, just two points. One, and I'm going to not know the decade that it happened, if it was in the 90s or the early 2000s, but at one point, we did put in angled parking on Monterey Street. But in order to do that, they had to make them one-way. And that one-way business was real uncomfortable for people, so they finally took it out. Now, if there's some way to put in angled parking on Monterey and have it two-way, that would be more acceptable, I would think, than on Main Street and Morro Bay Boulevard. I think those two streets, you have to protect from angled parking. And I, and my second point is, I cannot see this town doing back-in parking, not at our age, you know? And I'm not over yet, but I will be. And so there's no way I'm going to be backing into parking around anybody. So head-in parking, you know, the middle-of-the-street parking that you show, you know, they do that down in Pismo, some of our whitest streets, like maybe Market or Moro is the place to do that. But I hope you'll leave Morro Bay Boulevard and Main Street alone, and try to find some other kind of angled parking on other streets. And watch out for the bicycles.
Thank you.
Again, Erica with the Chamber of Commerce. So three things. The angled parking, I'd like to know, I don't know if staff has any information on the actual gain, like a numerical actual gain in parking spaces, were that to go in with each of those areas, I think that'd be helpful to know. And then also, you know, speaking with some of our member businesses along this route, there's a concern about the commercial loading in those spaces, too. So if you've got a bunch of angled parking, is, you know, that big blip down in the end going to be all for commercial loading, so that their trucks and delivery trucks can come by and not be in the middle of the road? The other is the delivery trucks. Again, speaking of member businesses down on the Embarcadero, and as a former bar owner, you never get 100% compliance with your delivery trucks. You know, you say, oh, you're going to get in trouble, you can't park after 11:00. They had a flat tire, they got delayed here, this other thing, this other thing. They have the only beer you want to serve, that's why your customers come there, you need their delivery. So how does that all work, you know? And I know you guys are talking about that with the Centennial and Embarcadero project. And then the paid parking, you know, is this a business-friendly climate that we have here in Morro Bay? If we have employees actually parking in front of their businesses where they work, and we're encouraging business expansion and growth, and we want businesses to be taking on more employees, and then we're saying, but you can't park there, you have to park someplace else? I was just in Santa Cruz, they have, you know, employee parking lots. I know we don't have employee parking lots, or maybe we don't now, but we could in the future. But just, how can we make paid parking positive for the business climate of Morro Bay? Or how can we talk about that? So, thanks.
Thank you very much. Since there's no one else left, I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible recommendations. Joe, why don't you start us out on this one?
This is certainly complicated. Well, I think one thing, whatever we decide on, or whatever anyone decides on, should be an experiment. This strikes me as too many locations to begin initially. These things always have, you know, unintended consequences. It'd be nice to sort of find out with some of those unintended consequences. It'd be nice to find out what the citizens of Morro Bay think about the scheme by experiencing it on a small scale. It'd be nice to find out exactly what it's going to cost.
So, so cost, it's fairly inexpensive. Mobilize somebody to come out here and paint lines on the streets, isn't real expensive. It's somewhere, I mean, all of the four options, if you implemented them all, it's somewhere in the $80,000 range. It's not that much. But it's a good point. The idea of rolling it out more slowly and trying it in a couple areas down here is a good one. Mr. Ewing's idea that we need to show what measurement's on and so forth, that's what I was referring to when I said, if you like some of these options, we'll go vet them and bring those back. So that was a good idea. And I agree with that. And we always, so in any block that we would go implement them in, we would go meet with all the business owners on them to go find out what the issues are, as Erica brought up. Because if their delivery trucks can't get to them, or do we, okay, we're going to put a few in, but now we got to leave a space next to the curb that the delivery trucks park at, then did we get a gain? Probably not worth it if we just gained one spot. So we need to look at those things. I mean, that's, that's part of what I meant by vetting it, is we'll go on the ground and go find out what it is, if there's ones, if you think, at least in general, it's worth pursuing, you may not think it. You may say, like, ah, this is ridiculous, we don't need it, or it's not appropriate in these locations, or what have you. That's kind of what I'm at least hoping to get out of this, is go, yes, we think it's worth spending some more time on, and I'll go develop some of those other things. And we do have information. We have had our engineering division look at some of these things in the past, and we know at least some of them will fit. And, okay, what we haven't done is the additional outreach where you go talk to folks that would be directly affected. And we need to do that. We would do that before we did any implementation.
You know, I was also thinking about the deliveries and the offloading. And, you know, my experience is that the truck drivers pretty much insist on getting as close as they can. And if you only have one or two offloading locations, because you want to establish as many consumer parking spaces as you can, especially without really strict enforcement, you're going to get the truck drivers, you know, parking out in the street anyway. You know, I have to admit that there's a certain... You know, I have to admit that there's a certain charm, a sort of 1940s look to angled parking in front of stores that I find, just personally, I find sort of attractive. But, you know, I'm also really aware of the hazard, particularly, I don't really, intuitively, I don't think backing into a space is really going to work. And then pulling in, I think, just creates quite a hazard in terms of other cars and bicyclists, particularly, you know, with the popularity of SUVs, which seem to really block a lot of your view when you're backing out. And with respect to paid parking, I just have a feeling that the citizens are going to ask, why? And the answers I've heard so far, I don't think would be very persuasive. I like the, well, I don't like the idea. I would consider the idea of, you know, more timed and limited timed parking, perhaps make it free, but enforce it. And, you know, the possibility of significant citations might do a lot in moving people out of their spaces to free it up for other customers. I don't know. That's about my only thoughts on it, really.
Good. Okay. The comment about the angled parking on Monterey, and they were, they did have one-way streets there, but they had the really bright idea that they ran the one-way streets going opposite directions, and they hit at Morro Boulevard. So it was kind of, you know, what? It was the stupidest idea that I've ever seen, and the worst implementation ever. So I don't think the problem was the angled parking as much as the circulation plan that they imposed. So saying that, I think rolling this out in the angled parking or the center parking could work, but I think we'd need to start it on the side streets, and then roll it into, you know, if we need the additional parking, or as we need the additional parking on Morro, Morro Bay Boulevard, then we roll it out there later, after the community has had a chance to get used to it. The other thing, too, is that I think having a predominant bike path on both Harbor Street and Pacific Street, you know, if you're going to be riding, if you're going to be riding a bike, you're not going to go down Morro Bay Boulevard anyway. There's too many stop signs. I don't drive down Morro Bay Boulevard because there's too many stop signs. So there you have the potential for the share-o and sharing the road, because it's a slower drive going down there. But having dedicated bike lanes on Harbor and Pacific would then get you, get you through town, up and down, in the, on the proper streets, where there actually is less traffic and less danger. As a bike rider who's put in hundreds of thousands of miles, I'd prefer to ride in the street than ride in, in a separate bike lane. What happens when you're riding is that if it's, you know, especially in Europe, when there were the first, first bike lanes were coming in, you had bike lanes separated from traffic. So as you would come up to segregated traffic, the traffic wouldn't even look to see if you were there. Where if you're in a bike lane and you're traveling, if you're in a roadway lane and you're traveling with the cars, they're going to look to see you. If you segregate it, they're not even going to look to see you, you know? And so it's actually, it seems safer, but it, it's more dangerous in the intersections when you're riding. So the other, the other thing on delivery trucks is they're going to park wherever, whenever, however they're going to do it. And they're going to park right in front of the businesses. And, you know, just this last weekend, I was on the Embarcadero during, it was like noon, 12:15, and there were four delivery trucks parked all in a line. You know, there was one lane of traffic at best. And they didn't care. So it would have to be enforcement on that. It would probably be good to have a policy that they would, you know, before 11, but, you know, enforce it as best you can. And I think timed, I would love to see paid parking, you know, on the Embarcadero and then downtown. But, but we would have to need the paid parking. We would have to have enough overload, enough capacity, overcapacity on the, on the, on the parking, that, that the paid parking would be worthwhile. Otherwise, I think timed parking and actually having enforcement would then push the, the employees out of the central core. And then some of these angled parkings up on Market Street and up on, you know, Morro Bay, Morro Avenue, then the employees would park up there, or they would go to the Triangle Lot, where, where the, then you would have the actual turnover for the customers. And the business owners should be able to, to see that, but they're, you know, most, you know, some of them are the worst offenders, too. You know, they'll park in front of their business and get out, and if they have to walk a block, they'll feel that they're just, you know, disenfranchised. But, but I think that's, you know, to have more parking, you need to limit it to the people that you want to have in there and you want to have the turnover. So paid parking would be great, but I don't think we're ready for it yet. I think timed parking with, with actual enforcement would be more appropriate right now. And it'd be cheaper to implement right now, too, I think. And then actually, you know, and having signage for the Triangle Lot and signage for two larger parking areas would help. Right now, people don't, don't know where they're going. And, and I do think this is part of the general plan update, but I also think this is a chunk that we could effectively look at now, that could then be incorporated into the general plan. Waiting for, to do all these pieces, well, we'll wait till the general plan comes through. I think that's short-sighted. This is, this is what we should be doing here, is taking a look at this and, and coming up with some, you know, some shots at it. And then if it, then that also gives us a time period that when we implement the general plan, we'll have a better understanding of what worked and what didn't work. So, did I miss any of our key points that we were looking for, Scott?
No, that was good. That's good. Thanks.
Good commentary. Thank you.
Yeah, I write off just looking at this, Morro Bay Boulevard and Main Street, I think we should kind of leave that alone. And back in, the backing in part, I think I really don't like that idea at all, just from a kind of safety aspect of it. And then another thing, you know, Scott, you know, like you have, like, it'd be nice to have something to scale, if, I know that, what you explained, I know that. But, you know, it's like a lot of times, they'll put these little, like, oh, you know, here's a, you know, soul. Well, a lot of these, you know, tourists, they come in a duly with a long bed truck, you know? It's a different situation, you know? And so I, I think that as far as an opportunity for consideration, might, might be Monterey Street with, for the angled, if you could do it properly. As far as, as far as bikes go, I, I, I'm kind of of the philosophy, kind of dodge traffic, you know? So, so...
I've seen you riding around.
So I, I, it's, that would be a bit of a challenge, you know, especially when you have the angled parking. So I would like to, I like that one picture that you showed where it was on the inside, but, you know, you have to have the width of the street, you know, where the guys were nose-in, but the bike route was, yeah, that, that, oh, they're backed in, though. Okay. But anyway, kind of like...
They could be, they could be facing. I mean, either one would work with that. You would just change the direction.
Yeah. If you, you know, if there was an opportunity of something like that, that'd be kind of cool. I don't like the idea of paying, of paid parking at all, like, at all, right now. And I think that there's enough, I think we need to get a better hold of what we have coming in already before we start adding more. And then the, oh, the deliveries. Yeah, I, I, you know, when I had my, I had a coffee shop in Pismo there, over by Gordain's Building, and, and I, you know, that, that's, sometimes you get busy and, you know, you need more stuff. You know, I'm kind of sensitive to the challenges, you know, for the business people, especially in Morro Bay. You've got to make your nut at a certain time, because, you know, the slow periods, you've got to carry you, you know? So I, I don't, I don't think that we should burden the deliveries as much, you know? And that's why what we have right now is, and it's challenging, you know, you get a truck there and stuff. But that's why I think that Morro Bay Boulevard and Main Street should, you know, just, well, let's leave that alone for a bit. That's all I have on there.
Well, it's a, it's a tough week for me, because a colleague at Cal Poly's wife was killed in a bike crash this week. And the safety of people who choose a different form of transportation is really critical to me. And, and, you know, I've, I've spent a lot of time in Copenhagen and Amsterdam, and they, they have designed from the beginning these separate kind of bike lanes. And, you know, if you go down to UC Santa Barbara, you see a lot of separate bike lanes on their campus. I think around here, though, the sharing is a, is a clear, cleaner thing. And that's why I would be very sensitive to listening to the folks that bike a lot, you know, like Commissioner Lour, the Bike Coalition, you know, what do they see as a bike strategy? Because I see, in the future, more bikes in town, not less. And we want to make it bike-friendly. And so I think if you do something to leverage more cars, you may actually make it less bike-friendly. I'm absolutely terrified of somebody trying to back out of an angled space with a bike behind them, because the, what happens is the, this is a very benign image, because those are all, you know, small cars and mini SUVs. But if you get some of our visitors, some of our visitors, they're hauling boats and things like that, have very large trucks. And if you start lining those spaces up with, with, you know, Chevy Tahos and things like that, you're going to have a much more difficult time to see. So I'm very concerned about that. I'm absolutely concerned about not starting this on Morro Bay Boulevard. I think we, if we want to test it, we have to test it somewhere else and, and see how it works. One of the things that's really hard to tell, though, when you also look at these, these flat renditions, is we actually have a lot of crown in some of our streets. And what really is going to happen is the center line now is going to, not going to be on the center of the crown. It's going to tend to be asymmetrical. And I'm really concerned about the perception of driving down this street asymmetrically. And, and I don't know, that's why I think you have to test it out somewhere. Start it on a flat street, you know, the north-south streets, as opposed to the east-west streets that have the, more of the incline in them. And I totally agree about the delivery situation. The nice thing about parallel parking is, boy, if the truck's a little longer, you take two spaces. If the truck's a little wider, we still have lots of room to get past it. With these types of solutions, we've really just taken a whole set of options out for the delivery folk, or the folks with, maybe even trailers, that might take two or three spaces. So I think we have to be very cautious that we, we don't make a, we don't get some advantage and then have, you know, collateral disadvantages built up around them. And then I, the one that scared me the most was the center parking strip thing. I, that totally freaked me out, because I'm thinking about the pedestrians moving back and forth across the mid-block, which we know people are going to do sometimes. And, and the asymmetry of, of a large vehicle maybe sticking out a little far from the intended parking space. You know, you can kind of get around it if it's on the side. We've got the two lanes of traffic you can drive in. But if you've already narrowed that thing down, you really don't have any other way to go. I almost wonder sometimes if somebody isn't going to actually impede traffic down the lane. I like the idea of experimenting, though. I do think it's an advantageous thing. I think if we, if we get some downtown redevelopment and we start looking at the in-lu issues, we may actually need a little bit more parking. I hope, I hope it does become a time when we need parking. To me, paid parking is punitive. You put paid parking up where you don't want people to park, you know? And I don't go to slow a lot, because I just don't want to mess with the meters. And mess is not the word I would usually use there. And I would just say that we have to be very cautious about the paid parking. Maybe along the Embarcadero where there's a free option, you know, here's, put a sign up, free parking, you know, and everybody sees there's paid parking. That keeps the, the staff and, and people that work in the businesses from, from parking there, I think. So I think we have to be very careful. To me, it's not a friendly thing. If we get to a point where we're really robust business-wise, maybe we could think about that. But I wouldn't, I would say it's discouraging, though. And I guess that's my main point. I really want to make it safe. One of the things we talked about a long time ago, it's not really part of this, but the idea that as we become more pedestrian-friendly, you know, instead of looking at just the parking situations, looking at things like bulbouts at the intersections. And I know we started putting in handicap curb cuts and things a while back. So I know we spent a lot of money on things, but the idea of actually decreasing the amount of space that you have to traffic through, walk through what seems to be an auto space, gives the pedestrian a sense of ownership of the town. And, and the only thing I'd say about the timed parking would be you want somebody to get out of their car, visit about three or four businesses, sit down and have a cup of coffee. So I don't think you want to turn everything into a 30-minute zone where you're, you're chalking people. I'd give them two or three hours, or four hours, something like that. That way you don't get overnight traffic or all-day traffic sitting there. But you get somebody who wants to get out of their car, you invite them to stay here longer by making it a generous thing. So those are the basic things. But, you know, because that incident's so fresh in my mind, and I know we seem to have a higher rate of incidents around here because of the bikers, I just think it's going to be a larger issue in the future. We have to be very cautious we don't create a hostile atmosphere toward people who prefer to bike.
Okay. Well, I will start out by saying that I kind of accept the idea that at times we do have a parking problem downtown. I, that 2007 parking study was designed to minimize the parking problem. It was set up in such a way that it underestimates the demand for parking in the downtown area. And in, there's some very specific characteristics of it that do that. So given that, given the fact that we do have, I'll talk to these specific proposals for angled parking first. Number one, on Morro Boulevard, the center of the street parking, I don't, I see that as the least likely place. There really is not a parking issue in that area, except on the very busiest weekends. There's almost always empty spaces on Morro Street. That's like the parking of Last Resort along the Embarcadero. And I think that, I really think that Morro Street should be part of the Centennial Stairway Distazio's project, you know, that that should be reserved for, for that, rather than dedicating it to parking. In terms of Main Street, one thing that, one thing that is important to look at, when you look at the diagrams, is that the thing that happens with the angled parking on Main Street is you lose that center turn lane. And that's where most of the unloading in that area of the downtown occurs. And I think that might be a bigger loss than the gain of parking spaces from the angled parking. Likewise, if you do it on Morro Bay Boulevard and the block that it's illustrated, you lose the right turn lane at, at Morro Bay and Main Street, which I... you lose the right turn lane at, at Morro Bay and Main Street, which I, I, I think will increase congestion at that intersection since it, the cars will have to go single file. And that kind of leaves Monterey Avenue, which might be a reasonable place to experiment. The one thing I would say, however, the one thing that you have to notice is, kind of in concert with what everybody else has said, we have a lot of large vehicles here in, in Morro Bay. When I drove in the parking lot, the cars that were in the parking lot were two vans, two pickup trucks, a, you know, one, one Kia and a full-size station wagon. So there's, there's, there was one small car out of six. And you, the one thing to notice is when you, on Main Street, Monterey and Morro Bay Boulevard, what is being proposed is all compact spaces. They're eight and a half by 18. That's, that's our, they're 8.61 actually by 18. That's, that's by definition a compact space. And, you know, if we're going to do that, I feel they should be marked as such and enforced as such. Because, you know, these, these spaces are, the, the parking spaces that are being proposed are actually about one and a half inches more narrow than an F-350 pickup truck with the mirrors. So you've, you've actually, if you put full-size vehicles in there, you've actually got them hanging out over the, the park. So either we need to, we need to be, we need to go for fewer parking spaces and make them wider, you know, or they need to be marked as compact spaces. The other thing that, that, the, the other thing that I would say about the angled parking is, you know, I, I feel more strongly than you guys do. I, I honestly feel that the angled parking is not compatible with bicycles on that side of the street. I, I think if you're going to put in angled parking on one side of the street, you've got to, you've got to restrict the bicycles to the other side. Other, otherwise, somebody is going to get seriously injured. Because people pulling out of those, and it's, it's nobody's fault. People just are not going to be able to see. So you either have to say, you know, you either have to say, no bicycles on Monterey Avenue, or you have to say, bicycles only on the side that has the parallel parking. Otherwise, it, it's a, to me, it's just hugely dangerous. Then to talk about some of the alternatives, I think that, I think, you know, I think you go with the, you go with the sort of least invasive, you know, coming from a medical background, you know, first do no harm. So I kind of think you go with the least invasive procedure first. And to me, that's enforcing the time limits. That's, that's having reasonable time limits. And reasonable, I would agree, would be several hours and would be limited to maybe between eight and six, because we really don't have a parking problem in, in the nighttime down there. You know, so just, just, you know, it should be pretty well delineated. I have a little bit of concern as to whether that program might impact some of the residential neighborhoods around downtown. In other words, if we have a lot of employees who are going to be displaced out into those residential neighborhoods, I think we have to keep an eye on that. And the other, the other thing that might be, might be able to be made part of that would be to negotiate with Bank of America. They've, I mean, there's just a huge unused capacity there that might be employee parking and, and could help, could help prevent that, that impact on the surrounding neighborhoods. I think, I think angled parking would be, I think back-end angled parking would be really good for business, but, but only in the auto body shop sector. I just, I just can't, I, I think that's probably something that people would have, I mean, they have enough, people have enough trouble with parallel parking, but back-end parking is, you know, except for, except for the lucky ones who have the camera. So, so, and I think, you know, time-limited parking is, is, is often sort of the precursor to paid parking, you know, but, because paid parking is one sort of efficient way to enforce time limits. So if, you know, and, and we should keep in mind, if we do it, that that's our goal, you know what I'm saying? So that, so that we, you know, we don't, we don't, we should, you know, if we, if we decide to go that way as a way to impose time limits, it can be a quarter an hour, you know. It doesn't, we don't have to charge $7 an hour like San Luis Obispo does. So, you know, it, it can be just a mechanism for telling people, your two hours are up, get out of here, you know, not necessarily a, a money-making venture. So it could be, it could be sort of tailored for Morro Bay in that way. So, so that's sort of my, you know, my lead-in would be to, to, to start out with the enforcing, you know, with the enforcing time limits, see how that works, maybe do a demonstration project of angled parking on a, on a street that's really not one of the, the major thoroughfares, and, and one of the, one of the side streets. And, and, and then, you know, see what happens. It, it very well may be that the enforcement of time limits will simply change people's habit, you know? I've been parking in this park, this parking spot right here for five years. And now, you know, I get in the habit of parking in the other parking lot, the parking spot that's a, a block over, you know. It, it may be that that's all that's necessary to sort of change the mindset of, I have to park right in front of my front door, kind of thing. If not, then we could move on to some form of, of, of paid parking. I, I don't see, I, I don't see angled parking in a lot of locations in downtown because, you know, of the number of driveways and, you know, that, the, the breaks in the, in the, in the pavement that make it a, a challenge in places. But, and, and I do see, one of the things with time limited is that a lot of the places where people want to spend a long time, like the library, for example, do have parking lots of their own. So that makes it, you know, we don't, it, it doesn't interfere with people who want to go to the library or places like that. So that, that would sort of be my list of priorities. And I do think, I do, but I do, I do think that if, if, one, one of the things about the angled parking, if you make it uncomfortable, people aren't going to use it, you know. So to, to have people trying to put a full-size SUV into this little eight-and-a-half-foot space, not going to work. Think how easy it is to park at Albertson's Shopping Center. Why? Because the spaces are quite wide, okay? You, you don't feel like you're in danger of smacking the car next to you. So I think, you know, if we're going to do angled parking, we need to make it comfortable in terms of size. And eventually, if we decide to keep it, we need to make it attractive in terms of, you know, putting in planter boxes at the end and, and, you know, doing maybe some special paving and stuff like that. And I don't, and again, I just can't emphasize, bike lanes should be nowhere in the vicinity of angled parking. They should be on the other side of the street or they should be on the next street over. We just, that is just too dangerous. So that's my take on it. Anyone want to go for a?
Yeah, I'm, I'm starting to recall some of the, some of the places that I'm familiar with that have this kind of angled parking where I actually like the experiences. Montrose in the Los Angeles area and even, even Ventura. And I don't exactly how you'd describe it architecturally, but they seem to have lots of things designed in the street to really slow traffic down. There are pedestrians, stoplights and, and sort of peninsulas that come out and cobblestones that really convey over and over again to the motorists, slow down. And, and again, my impression is that they've excluded bicyclists from those areas as well.
And, and Ventura has a lot of what Michael was talking about. It has the bulbouts, it has the, the partition sticking out in the street and that, to make it more pedestrian-friendly.
Yeah. And using the bulbouts and using the traffic calming and using the architectural elements is really where, that's the, where we want to go with the downtown, you know, appearance, you know, where you have the trees touching over the, you know, canopy touching over the street and, you know, this bucolic downtown cityscape. I mean, just talking about angled parking doesn't make it fit in. You need those other accoutrements to make it a full environment. Because then, then you're going to have people, when they're backing out, they're going to be backing out slow. If you have the bicycles being able to take the whole lane, then there's room for them to maneuver. You get somebody pulling out and you've got the charros there that, you've got a, you've got a whole lane, you can see them, you can see them come out, you can actually maneuver or slow down around them. But having a fast-moving traffic and, and angled parking is incompatible.
I just had one more comment. You know, if you actually went back to this idea of looking at the larger design and didn't focus on the parking, if you actually asked people, would you rather see more parking along Morro Bay Boulevard, or would you rather rebuild Morro Bay Boulevard so the sidewalks were wider and accommodated trees and outdoor seating at the restaurants and things like that, they'd go for the widening the sidewalks, not increasing the parking. So I think this idea is a long-term issue that feeds into the design, and we don't want to be too short-sighted about it.
Yeah, I, I, one, I, one other thing I forgot to comment was the idea of restricting deliveries to a particular time. I, I would agree with everybody else. I think it's infeasible. I was down on the Embarcadero yesterday and there were nine 18-wheelers getting, literally, waiting to load up because the squid catch had come in. You know, I mean, you can't control when the squid catch comes in.
Probably more than spun ass.
Yeah. Actually, no, you guys did a great job. This was a lot of, this is a lot of really good input and, and very similar. So that actually makes me think, okay, yeah, we got solid input. I don't have you all saying different things. When I get that, that's when I go back to my office and shake and rock back and forth. But yeah, no, but you guys are, you know, coming up with very similar comments and very directed comments. So I think that's actually really helpful to, to what I'm doing. And, and I have a lot of other ideas that came up with that of this as well from listening to you guys, you know, provide input. So going to do a, a little data gathering with some folks in our Public Works Department and a couple of our interns and, and see if we can't come back with some of this stuff. And then look at what it might look like to do a few of these things, like, first time and parking and what does that look like? And go, I want to go inventory where we have all the time parking spaces, because we don't have the signs associated with all of them, but all of them, we do have the green curbs and go look at where those are all at now. At one point, I saw a map, so see how accurate that still is. And, and kind of go from there, right? You know, and then look at maybe at one of the streets that we could actually implement this on, you know, sort of as an interim thing, and then go run that around to the folks that would be around that to see what they think about it before we do it. And, and kind of go from there. And that's, I think that, that's good. I mean, those are, those are, those are solid, you know, solid choices. And people can see how it operates. That's probably the best thing, is give them examples. And so people can look at it and say, do you like this? Is this comfortable? You know, it would be better with X, Y, or Z, you know, you know, along with it or what have you. So, yeah, I think those are, those are all good comments.
I think these are all part of the growing, I mean, I, I think realistically, these are all part of the growing pains of moving from the idea of parking on-site to parking as some sort of a neighborhood project, you know?
And another comment, Scott, just if I could, you know, as we, if we move into more multi-family development and multi, multi-use development for the downtown area, we should actually be looking maybe at parking in interior blocks. And, you know, zoning those so that there's access to the interior of the blocks that wouldn't be as useful as the perimeter of the blocks. And we could then build parking structures that would support that. So, you know, as part of the, the overall redevelopment of the downtown area, that may be something to keep in mind. And just a pet peeve of mine, if, if we could, any street furniture, if we could just not have the engineering department choose it.
I'll convey your concerns to, to Mr. Livick.
Do we, do we know what Mr. Livick's living room looks like?
We have no unfinished business tonight. However, we can continue with planning commissioner comments, because that's the next item on the agenda, so. Any future, future items to agendize or?
You know, I did get, thank you, I did get a letter from regarding Measure D. And I, you know, I, I feel that this is, you know, I looked into a little more of the history of it and, and it's, you know, this is a, this was the will of the people. And so I don't know if maybe we should, maybe, can we have a discussion about it, maybe? This agendized a discussion about Measure D, just to kind of get a feel for what exactly? Or is that?
You, if, if two other folks up there would like to talk about it, feel free. You could, we can put it on a future agenda item. We have, there's probably over the next month and a half, there's, we have some items that are in flux right now about where they're going to fall on the agenda. And this would be one of the things you could talk about if you can get two other folks to say they want to talk about it.
Well, I, I, I would, personally, I would like to, I would like to talk about it. I, I think that, that we need, it's an, also an educational thing for, like, the public.
To, to me, it fits in with the whole Embarcadero design. What, what do we want to have happen at the Embarcadero? And that was a point in time, apparently there have been a record of other things in between there that the, I think we all got this letter that contests the wisdom of some of the things that were, were done. And I, I think it's always great to, if it's seen as a positive thing contributing to what's going to be, you know, a new part of the general plan, the specific plan in the general plan, I think that would be a, a, a good thing to have at some point.
And from my perspective, it, it really would be an, an education. I know when I read the letter, there are a lot of assumptions made and I was having some difficulty sort of following from, from thought to thought. And I'd sort of like to have something laid out that I could sink my teeth into.
Yeah, I think the fact that Measure D was the will of the people is a blessing and a curse. It's a blessing because they gave very clear direction, and it's a curse because it's not very well-written. And so, and so, there's been some inconsistency, or I gather, let me, let me just put, I gather that there have been some inconsistencies in the way it's been applied in the past. And maybe some interpretation, some clarification going forward would be helpful to everybody.
You know, and then we can...
I don't know if I'm going to bring a lot of clarity to you all, but we can certainly agendize it for a discussion and then we can talk about it. But, yeah, I, I mean, it's interesting.
We could get at least a sense of the spirit of, of what it is and from a current environment.
I think if you walk around down on the Embarcadero to the north of Beach Street, you can sort of see that there's what it says. And then you look around and there's what's out there, you know. And those are oftentimes not the same thing. So I can see why, you know, it's, it concerns some folks, but...
Well, I've, and I've thought about it on a number of occasions and usually stopped because I had a headache. But, but it's one of those areas where you go, oh, well, obviously we should do this. And then you start to think about, well, what would, how would the dominoes fall if we did that? And you realize that, that brings negative results, you know. And then you say, well, obviously we should do this. And it does the same thing, you know. So it's, it's, it's something to grapple with.
So, yeah, certainly, I'll, I'll probably look over the next month and a half or so and place it for discussion on one of the agendas where we don't have much on it, to, you know. I have a couple of other things I've been kind of moving around, so, something like that. Seems like I'm getting a bunch of head nods, so that's, that's certainly a good indication to, to bring it forward. Happy to.
Thank, thank you, Scott.
Comments from our community development director?
We have our, we have our general plan advisory committee coming up on Thursday. For those of you that don't know, the, we've released the, the baseline assessment for the general plan. It's 600 and something pages. It's on the Plan Morro Bay page. So Plan, the Plan Morro Bay page on our website, that's the kind of branding name we're using for the general plan update. You don't have to read all 600 pages. There might be just, but there, it's, it's broken down by the, almost kind of like by the elements that are in the plan. And there's a little more to it than that. But, so there's, if you didn't see Level Raj, there's a piece that talked about... about sea level rise. If you're interested in economics, there's stuff that talks about economics. So if you're interested, someplace to go look for some of the latest and greatest information that we have from the update process and the general plan advisory committee is going to, to go at that for a couple of hours on Thursday, see what kind of comments they have bringing that forward. And then, once we're done with that process, we do have, you will have a, the planning commission has a joint meeting on the ninth of August with the city council where you're going to get kind of an update, you know, 10,000-foot level about where we're at, where we're going, that type of thing. What's been done to this point in the general plan update process, just to sort of keep you all up to speed. So those are the, you know, things kind of coming up here in the, in the immediate future related to the general plan update. And that's, that's all I have.
Very good. Okay, well, with that then, we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be here at the Veterans Building on October 2nd at 6:00 PM. Thank you. I mean, I'm sorry, August 2nd. Good night.